Welcome everyone to the Bossier City Regular Council Meeting today, the twentieth of February of two thousand eighteen. We have the call to order invocation by Mr. Scott Irwin and the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like for you to stand also in reflection, in silence, in reflection of what we've experienced in South Florida and just in reflection of those who have lost loved ones. And after that, we'll have Mr. Irwin to give us a prayer.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us, Lord. Lord, we just pray for our nation, Lord, that I can be healed, Lord. We pray for those who are hurting with the tragedies that have happened across our nation. Lord, we thank you for each person here today. We pray for those in our community who are sick or hurting, Lord. Lord, we pray for the rain event that is coming to be manageable and not harm anyone's homes. Lord, we pray for safety for our military and for wisdom for our nation, our state, and for us in this council meeting today. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Real call, please.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
All present.
Chair entertain approve minutes of January thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, meeting and dispense with the, well, also in February sixth, two thousand eighteen, regular meeting and dispense with the reading.
So move.
Oh, that's right.
Yes, sir.
If I could make, I would like to address item number five in our unfinished business. It's been called to my attention and Montgomery and I had put together this particular ordinance for passage and then I think some of the debate and discussion went into amending it. And I think today it comes back amended and in its amended form, there's been other discussion and there is a, there's a further amendment that, that is the author of this that we would like to propose. And so I was going to request that this particular item be carried, be offered in an amended form at the next council meeting and discuss it then. We would like to add language that, that preserves the mayor's right in the, in the exclusive instance of an emergency to be able to act independently and upon further review, Councilman Montgomery and I have seen and others have seen that that is unclear here and in fact may, in fact, remove that and we didn't, at the end of the day, we didn't think that was a comfortable and correct thing to do.
Okay. Mr. Larkin, would you mind if, when we get to that item, that you make those amendments?
If you would like to do it that way or we could, or we could take it off the agenda, whichever you'd like.
Okay.
I'll defer to you.
Okay. All right. So let's, let's complete number five.
Give him his second. I have Irwin for the motion.
And Mr. Williams, your second.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I thought we were approving the agenda.
Not, not yet. That's the next one. Okay. And, and please cast your vote, council. So now, under Romans six, it's approved the agenda.
And, and I'm not going to say all that again.
Is now the time to do that?
Well, no, we're gonna, we're gonna get to number five under unfinished and then you can make all those revisions.
Great.
There are no additions to the agenda, council.
None, okay. And the chair entertain a motion to approve agenda?
So move.
And we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Please cast your vote. Recognition of guests. Glad you're here. You all have a guess. And, and it's ceremonial matters today. Committed reports. Ms. Fernandez.
Good afternoon, council. I've distributed the financial reports for the month of January two thousand eighteen. I would say that we make a lot of reclassifications and accruals and such entries to where it really is going to take us kind of probably through the first quarter before we get really good numbers that we can rely on heavily. But on page one, the revenue by fund, it's showing that we're one hundred and thirty-seven percent of budget, which it's more realistic if you look at the City of Bossier City sales tax collection, collection, sales tax basis, one oh four. That's more accurate. Then on page two, our expenses by fund, they're significantly under. We still have some more expenses to book at seventy-four percent. And page three, this is a positive note that I do believe is pretty accurate and that's our year-to-date collections are six point eight percent above prior year. So that's really good and we're happy with that. Then page four is our manning report. We have one more employee now than we had last month and we are still twenty-two positions below the new budget of six eighty-nine. Page five is our water and sewer report. Again, just looking at the month to date compared to the prior year, it's pretty skewed. But if you look at the rolling twelve months at a hundred and two percent, that's pretty, that is accurate. So we're doing, we're right on schedule. Does anyone have any questions?
I just, yes, sir. Mr. Darby, I would like to ask if you could request on behalf of the council for Man Shack to give us a calendar update as to their savings, both operating, capital, and what's the term? When we actually do our own work?
Capital projects.
No, cost avoidance.
Oh, cost avoidance, okay.
So there's three things, capital, cost avoidance, and operating. I'd like for, you know, keep the public informed as to how that's going and what we're saving and the operational and so forth. Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. And based on this Montgomery request, as noted, Mayor, will you request that Man Shack bring to our attention that information?
I'll do it now.
Are they ready today? I don't think so.
March sixth. Put it on the next agenda, sir.
Yeah.
March sixth.
Would that suffice? Thank you so much.
I'll add it to the March sixth.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Thank you. Anything from Ms. Fernandez?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, so that concludes that unfinished business.
Adopt an ordinance to appropriate funds to cover construction costs for the sewer subbase in B.C. nineteen rehabilitation project for a total of two million four hundred eighty-nine thousand, three hundred thirty-eight dollars to come from the twenty sixteen L.D.E.Q. loan, C.S. twenty-two eleven oh three dash zero two. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or debate? The floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance authorizing Lorenz Walker, Mayor, City of Bossier City, on behalf of Bossier City to enter into and execute a professional services agreement with Arshon Information Systems, LLC, doing business as Civic Source for the administration of an online auction and sale of adjudicated properties program. Final reading. And Councilman Mr. Harris is here. If y'all have any questions.
Okay.
So move.
All right. Second. Thank you very much. Mr. Harris is present. Does the council wish that Ms. Harris come forth to give additional information?
Apparently he doesn't, but I'd like to just say, he was Mayor of Gretna, I believe, for twenty-three years and he knows what kind of things we deal with here on the council. Any questions of him?
Thank you for being here, Mr. Harris. We appreciate it. We have a motion is second. Anyone would like to speak on this item? Thank you. Please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance authorizing the purchasing and training of one police canine dog to replace one retired for medical issues. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Anyone like to speak on this item? Please cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to correct typographical errors in the legal description set forth in ordinance number one sixty-four of twenty seventeen regarding an aerial easement over an alley located behind one forty-five Evans Place subdivision of Bossier City, Louisiana. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Anyone would like to speak on this item? Please cast your vote, council.
Adopt an ordinance implementing budgetary controls and otherwise providing with respect there to. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Okay. At this point, Councilman Mr. Larkin has the floor.
Yes, Council, we would, we would like to further amend the ordinance to explicitly preserve the power of the mayor to declare an emergency. And, and simply would like to add that language to the ordinance itself.
Okay.
And for that reason, we would like to just recommend that the ordinance then be brought back for, in its amended form.
Okay. So you're going to make an amendment today that we add the mayor has the power to call City Hall close, emergency-wise?
Add the language that the, that the above shall not limit, restrict, or remove the authority of the mayor to cancel or close city government in a bona fide emergency that, in his opinion, exists.
Okay. Is there a second?
Okay. Is that, so the city council still wants control of whatever days other than the holidays that's in the ordinance, but the mayor will just close it just in emergencies? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Your second?
Second.
Mr. Montgomery, okay.
And this would be a good time to discuss any misgivings or second guessing we might have about that, might.
You need to remind him you're deleting that one part.
This right here?
Yeah.
I thought we were preserving, yeah. Okay, so, so the, Mr. Montgomery, to further clarify, the, the, the sentence that, that begins with "be it further ordained that the city government shall not be closed except on authorized days of the Bossier City Code of Ordinances," we would delete that, that paragraph.
Okay.
If we delete that paragraph, is there really a need to amend it any further?
Maybe it would be helpful if we get this one here.
The clerk to read.
It's not that, it's this one.
That section.
Just that.
Do, do you have that on your?
I have the ordinance. The, that section reads, "Be it further ordained that the city government shall not be closed except on the authorized days set forth in section seventy-eight dash ten of the Bossier City Code of Ordinances unless approved by the Bossier City Council."
We need to do it today.
Okay, go ahead. All right. Defer Mr. Montgomery, go ahead.
So, so the last part you're going to delete is which line?
Can we re-clarify?
Okay, okay.
We had the wrong, he had the wrong one. The paragraph we want to delete is "be it further ordained by the City Council, Bossier City, that Bossier City Council has the sole authority to cancel a schedule." Okay, we're leaving that part delegated. Where's that at?
That is the very last paragraph.
Thought he read the right paragraph that wants, that he wants to delete.
Well, defer to, Phyllis, what we want to do is take out where the mayor has to contact us if he declares emergency.
That's not in this ordinance anywhere. It's not listed in this ordinance anywhere.
As an emergency, it's still.
Okay, what, I'm sorry, excuse, the paragraph that states that he has to consult the City Council to shut down government, where is that?
It's, it's the "be it further ordained that the city government shall not be closed except on the authorized days set forth in section seventy-eight dash ten of the Bossier City Code of Ordinances unless approved by the City Council." And then also, there's another section up there above, the third one down, the third whereas down, it says, "Whereas section seventy-eight dash ten of the Bossier City Code of Ordinances designates authorized holidays approved by the Bossier City Council and whereas when Bossier City Government is closed beyond the authorized days, it is a serious imposition to Bossier City citizens."
So that's the one we want to take out, right? I'm gonna leave it back to you then.
If I may, Mr. President.
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
The only time I ever do that is when the incumbent governor sends out a notice to all government activities that say because of X, whatever X is, he is going to let all government employees off as a, he calls it a, a vacation day. I've never called it a vacation day. I've called it administrative down days because I'm acutely aware that there's so many vacation days that end the charter. And so that's the only time I've ever asked that we shut down and I don't, I said, I hate to put y'all in a place and go out and say, well, everybody else, the government employee in the state is off, but why not Bossier City employees? That's just it.
All right. So at this point, I think it's going to be best if the city clerk give a summation of that amendment made so we all can be on the same page because it was going back and forth.
The original amendment that, that we haven't voted on yet is, I have, preserves the mayor's right to act independently to declare emergencies for office closings.
Okay. Mr. Larkin, is that clear?
Yes.
Okay. That's what you needed, okay. So we have amendment to this ordinance, motion by Mr. Larkin, second by Mr. Montgomery. And council, are you ready to vote or you want to debate more?
Is, are there, is there going to be anything deleted from this after we vote on?
I don't think there's, there, there are motions.
We're good with it just like it is.
The motion is just to amend that section.
Okay. Okay. Counsel?
From the audience.
Anyone would like to comment? Anyone confused? Let's, let's vote. All right, please cast your vote.
Okay, the motion carries to amend it.
Now, we, we need our motion to.
Can I make another amendment? Even though that one passed, just to see what the next one does?
Okay.
I, I'd like to make amendment to take that paragraph out. "Be it further ordained that the city government shall not be closed except on authorized days set forth in section seventy-eight ten of Bossier City Code of Ordinances unless approved by the City Council." That's not our job, it's not our responsibility. I don't think we need to do that.
My second.
It's the mayor's job.
Okay. Okay. So we have another amendment to this ordinance, by Mr. Williams, second by Mr. Harvey. Any other discussion?
I would, I would just like to say, that's what I explained a while ago, that I would never ask for an administrative down day unless it's already been initiated to the government at the state level by the governor. That's the only time I've ever taken.
Okay. No, no further discussion? Anyone from the audience would like to speak on the amendment made? Please cast your vote.
So the paragraph is deleted. Now, there needs to be a motion to reintroduce as amended.
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, just to make this, it's clear until we aren't jockeying back and forth. So the city council is not going to have the authority to, to close or open City Hall, just the mayor, is that correct?
City Hall.
That's what everybody understands it. Tim, that's, is that what you and David understand?
Yes.
Yes, it, my, yes, sir, yes.
But if I may also, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I, I think I did learn some lessons and it would be better if I spoke with the president of the council anytime that I felt like the situation was such that we needed to close it. I think that would be helpful and that's what I intend to do in the future regardless of how this is voted on.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So summation is that there's going to be more communication in the future?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much. Anyone would like to speak on this item? Please cast your vote, council.
Oh, hold on, it's council. Now, I'm ready. Go ahead.
Oh, let's try it again.
Okay. It'll come back up for March the sixth. New business?
Mm-hmm.
Witness opening of sealed bids for citywide concrete repairs.
Counsel, this is our typical annual citywide concrete repairs. There was one addendum. The bid packet had been left off of bid sync, so that's now included. The engineer's estimate is nine hundred and seventy thousand. The budget is one million and it's coming from the street and drainage fund. The first bid is from Three Gen Construction. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for one million forty-six thousand dollars. The next bid is from C.W.N.W. Contractors, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for one million, one sixty-five, two fifty. The next bid is from Best Jet Builders, LLC. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for nine hundred seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Can you read that amount again, please, Stacy?
Nine seven seven, nine three five, point zero zero.
Thank you.
The next bid is from Agent Eng Contracting Company, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for one million fifty-two thousand, one hundred dollars. The next bid is from Karma Contractors, LLC. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for one million thirty-nine thousand dollars. And the last bid is from RVP Construction, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond, the bid bond is included. It's for nine hundred eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. I ask that you approve the reading of these bids?
So move.
Second. Please cast your vote. Thank you.
Mr. Irwin? Vote on that item? Introduce an ordinance appropriating sixty thousand dollars from the twenty seventeen EMS capital and contingency fund to purchase five more aeroclave machines due to the widespread flu epidemic. First reading?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Would anyone like to speak on this item? Please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to authorize the city to enter into an agreement with Gumbo Event Productions to provide professional event production and management of the East Bank District and Plaza. First reading?
I'll second for, for discussion.
Discussion?
I, I had a couple of questions regarding this. I know that we're approving the expenditure of five thousand, five hundred dollars. Come on. My, my first question is what territory does this encompass? What will be, is it just the plaza in, in the, the new area that we just renovated or does it encompass any other areas like the boardwalk or, because it's just the plaza? My other, my other question is, I guess I would be interested before I voted on something like this, on a, like a business plan, on what, what we're getting for our money. What, what's the vision? Specifically, I would be interested in knowing, are, are we planning, you know, music every Friday and Saturday night? Are we planning something once a month? Or are we planning two festivals? I would be interested perhaps in, in a proposal being put together and, and if the rest of the council thought the same, if distributed so we, we could look back at the end of the year and see if the performance was in line with what we were expecting.
I apologize, my grandpa's shoulder on my desk.
We do have that. We actually do have a scope of services that they'll be working within to program the East Bank District and work with the vendors and the businesses in the East Bank District. Ms. Matthews has been doing that since we engaged her services for the grand opening that we had held in November. That was the first time under a contract. We, she actually put that program together for that opening, contacted all the outside vendors that were part of that day, made arrangements with the band that was there that day, the, the Jumpy Toys and all, and did all the advertising as well for that through a website that she has developed for promoting the, the district. Given we built a beautiful district in that area, we need some guidance and we feel that the management that she could bring to the table during the design of the plaza, she's been involved in it, working with Mike McSwain and, and together with us, we needed that. She has a deep interest in working with all of the vendors there. We have a scope of services we put together of developing not only the website, the programming, building a coalition of the business owners is in that area to unite them. And she will be the conduit, this group will be the conduit also as well for the next item on your agenda, for the special liquor license that has to be put, put in place with a special permit. So she will be the coordinating factor of that entire area for all events. She already has events programmed for the area. The band wars, you may be hearing a radio advertisement, I heard it today myself at noon, that's scheduled down in that area, March the ninth to the eleventh. It will bring in numbers of people. But this fee includes all of the programming of it, but also includes her services that she brings to the table. So we're looking at her production services that we bring with Gumbo Productions for staging, for the sound equipment, it's all included and encompassed in that. She'll be responsible simply as renting the portlets for an event. So all of that money is included that. So we'll just be coordinating with her of the needs we would need for an outside event that comes in that needs to conduct rental of our police department for, for extra security that may be there. She'll be responsible for coordinating that rental of those policemen for that day. If we need to bring in our barricades, we can make arrangements for any barricades, of course, that would be a no charge on that since we own those. But that fee not only is just services, it's also goods she provides to us. So I think, we think we're getting a lot, lot for our buck there. And if we looked at what it would cost to man that with the amount of manpower, we couldn't afford it. We couldn't afford it. So we're simply looking at the services provided and we're also not only just the services, but. So we're look, simply looking at the services provided and we're also not only just the services, but what it takes to put an event on. I mean, you and I don't put events on every day, they do, people in that profession do. And Gumbo Production has a good history of working on events here, working our civic center, uh, the Opera League has held all the, the Petit De Nails has done under the coordination of Gumbo Production, Mudbug Madness has a deep history or so, I, we highly recommend her as a professional service agreement.
And I, I do want to make clear that I, I do think it's critical that we have a single point of contact to, to manage that area.
Right, and that's where, that's where Gumbo Productions will be that single point. So of an event coming in, they'll be responsible for coordinating the sales tax to be collected, this next permit that we will be collecting, and any and all questions will be answered by her, it will eliminate City Hall questions. Now we'll have that single point of responsibility that we can provide to you monthly, a list of, of events, not only...
I, I think it's, it's a great idea and, uh, you know, yes, I don't think we need our city employees hauling chairs out there.
No, we don't, and we don't have the wherewithal to do it, we're...
Great to have her doing that. Also, in, in today's environment, I think holding a public event and getting the word out is becoming quite a science because the media is so fractured between a little bit of people watching TV, a few people reading the paper, a lot of social media, websites. So, getting the word out is difficult and I think it's, it's critical that we have someone that can do that.
It is, and social media is huge, and it, she did an excellent job in, with getting out the word on our grand opening.
My question is...
You and Mr. Harvey were there that day, I don't think the other council...
Is she plan, is she saying in March, we're gonna have, uh, an event?
Yes, sir.
Or is she waiting for the, the businesses in the district to come to her and say, let's have...
We have a planned event, the band wars will take place, March ninth? March tenth to eleventh.
Could you come up and share your list of potential candidates, because she has quite an impressive list.
That's what I'm interested in, is what, what's the vision, uh, what kind of events are coming and how often?
It's actually a combination of, um, privately produced events that the city would be the presenting sponsor of. In addition to that, second party events that come to us and say, hey, we want to have an event down there and we'll work with them, make sure they're in compliance with everything and take care of the, the plaza. Um, in addition to the ones that the East Bank Merchants, we've put together an East Bank Merchants Association and, um, we've been meeting. Um, they're really excited and they're bringing events to the table as well, Flying Heart Brewery, Destiny Day Spa. Right after, um, the band wars, we're gonna have the Berkshire Hathaway grand opening down there in conjunction with St. Patrick's Day Festival that we will produce. Um, so we're coordinating that, coordinating that together. In March already, we have the band wars, that event, and then a corn dog festival that, um, Clark Telgating is, um, is, uh, working with us to put that on. And in addition to that, there's, um, four or five other events that have already confirmed for down there, for this year. Long term, we're looking at some other ones, but our, in the, in the scope of services that we provided with the city, it's to produce one signature event a year, um, presented by the city, um, two or three quarterly events, and then, um, five or six second party events, which means that they would come to us. The quarterly events would be those that the East Bank Merchants Association and us, when I say us, the city, on behalf of the city, produce ourselves.
So, when, uh, when you have an event that is, uh, that they're two or three quarterly events, that would be basically sponsored by the merchants, are they paying for the band?
Um, yeah, if the second party, they would pay for the band, absolutely, now...
And you would pay for the tables and chairs or whatever?
For tables, chairs, portlets, security, cleanup, things like that, yes, sir.
That's my question, and then, when, when you have, you said there'll be one event sponsored by the city, then the city would pay for the band?
No, it comes out of that fee.
It comes out of the fee.
Yeah, there's no additional fees coming to you, no, sir.
Is it all inclusive in that fee?
Okay, so you're not gonna come to us later and say, we need ten thousand dollars or something?
No, sir, no, sir. And in addition to that, it's also developing and maintaining a website that would promote all of these things in addition to the website, the Facebook page and all the social media that comes with it.
You've answered my question.
Okay, thank you.
When, when is the first, you said the first?
Um, it's, we've got it on the books, it's March ninth, tenth and eleventh, ninth is actually a load-in day, the actual event days are the tenth and the eleventh.
But it's the band wars.
It's the band wars, you...
Will we have alcohol, I mean, will we have the alcohol permit, alcohol section done by then?
You pass it, we will, please.
This is two readings, is this...
It's tight, but...
It's, we're already at the end of February, I mean...
We vote today, you'll have March sixth be the second reading, we've already developed the permit.
It's gotta be, Phil, is that...
Has to be advertised, and it won't be advertised till the following Wednesday and then ten days following publication.
So you're gonna, later on into March?
That's when the ordinance has become legal, right, Jimmy?
Given we just learned that the special permit would be required because of the Alcohol Control Board's regulations, this is as quick as we could get it on your agendas.
Ms. Florosa, when you, uh, mentioned earlier, your, your company did the opening in November, what, what was the fee for that?
Five thousand dollars, and that was inclusive of the rental of the bands, the Jumpy Toys, there was one number.
And on this, um... On this agreement, it's, it, it doesn't say the ending date, so is this a one-year, two-year, what, how many years will this be in place?
Be an annual contract.
Okay, because I don't think there was an ending date listed in this portion that we have.
Not in the ordinance, no, sir, it would be in the contract itself.
It start March first, uh, March two thousand eighteen?
Yes, sir. After the approval of this. And that will...
Are they gonna have to-go cups down there too, at that plaza area, to walk in other bars or...
Let's go back in, into reality, you know, we approved the region shortly after we approved the region. In fact, after we approved it at the last meeting, I was informed by one of the owners down there that the Alcohol Tobacco Control Board has, uh, informed them that you can't leave a restaurant with a cup. So short of the, the reality is the only place you can leave a place with a cup is a bar, not a restaurant where primarily food is sold. So whether they were a brewery at Flying Heart or they were a restaurant, they still can't have a to-go cup leave there or they'll violate state law. The only place that's allowed in the district that you can leave would be just an actual bar where the primary commodity sold is alcohol, not, not food. So short of this festival permit, there, there won't be an opportunity to, to have people, uh, provide alcohol. They, they, in fact, Flying Heart right now wants to sponsor a Brew Fest, and it's one of the, one of the events they want to sponsor, but it's gonna require this festival permit to allow the region to be used as a venue for alcohol distribution because at the end of the day, uh, what we did really didn't provide an avenue because there are no actual, just, uh, performable bars down there.
So, I guess my, two questions, probably a lot of questions, why are we just not getting informed of that? And we went through all that crap with, with Boardwalk, and they don't have just a bar down there, they got bars and restaurants, so really you can't walk outside down there.
Let me tell you how I found out, uh, Mr. Mc...
Don't blame me, I'm just...
No, Mr. McFadden came to me and said he'd like to re-initiate the, uh, Boardwalk thing, and I told him you might want to wait a little while. Well, right after that, Ben Hart from Flying Heart Brewery walked up and told me about the Alcohol Tobacco Control Board. I didn't know that they had a regulation outstanding in the state that refused to allow you to leave a restaurant, but you could, you could open ten bars and everybody could walk out in the region where it was approved. So reality is that, that's why the festival, uh, permit was created, because if you're gonna have festivals, you're gonna have to have an opportunity for people to bring in, uh, options to serve the masses. If you have large crowds, they've got to have the capability, much like it does at the Red River Revel. So, you know, they're, they've recently, following that, tried to open, uh, the same, uh, opportunities in, in Shreveport, but, but the reality is Alcohol Tobacco Control has a regulation that does not allow you to leave a restaurant. So, to your point, at Boardwalk, it's of no moment, because at Boardwalk, uh, it would never happen because there's no actual bar there unless somebody wanted to open just a bar.
It's weird though that, that none of the bar, bar restaurant people knew that though, you know, all, all the ones that spoke about it.
Well, it's, it's almost...
They just put us through a lot of...
And, and it, well, and it was a twist of fate really because, uh, in the, in the middle of it, you know, uh, Flying Heart started out as a brewery. Then they, they started selling pizza, so they wanted to re, uh, go to retail. So the fact that they changed their designation from brewery to retail brought in the Alcohol Tobacco Control people who, oh, by the way, informed them of the regulation at the time.
I'd also like to offer that we've put together a user agreement that anybody coming, any second party coming on and, and using the space for an event, in that user agreement, it, it outlines the ordinance for the special event permit, who to contact, where to pull it, and also, uh, the one for the state, so that everybody's in compliance. So we're not just, I mean, we're policing it ourselves in addition to them having to pull the permit.
And they have to pull a state permit for the festival permit as well as the local permit to be able to serve it, it, if the festival permit is approved.
But, Ms. Florosa, on this, uh, company, this is your, your first option. When you guys were debating going forward, did you have a second option? Other than going in this direction with management and that type of thing?
As a different company?
Well, just, just the process of getting things moving.
Well, Ms. Matthews had been involved since the beginning of the plaza and the, and the downtown area, and her involvement and, and coordination, working with Mike McSwain, she became part of the team just in conversation, so I did not go outside and visit with any other vendors.
Okay, okay, alright.
You haven't talked to any other...
No, sir.
We have production companies in Bossier. We haven't talked to them, just get ideas or get presentations or...
We, we had a team of people put together for the development of the plaza from architectural to contracting, uh, visits with Terry during the course of the construction. She knew what was going down there, like I say, it was part of, part of the team of, of people we had together.
Would, would your, your production company answer to that team or to another oversight body?
She'd answer to the city, the teams, we've done away with the team, we finished the construction. But she was aware of what the project was going to be like and how we were gonna be doing the project, uh, from dealing, just as, as a matter of the contract. The contract of dealing with Boggs and Pool, I was also talking to Ms. Matthews with Gumbo Productions about what we planned to do from day one. She was been involved in inquiring and talking to us.
Okay.
From myself and also Mike McSwain.
Yeah, and not just, um, I mean, from infrastructure, the types of power outlets we would need to have, have events and things like that.
Knowing what, what physical elements were there as well.
Physical elements, in addition to, you know, um, I mean, I've got experience with state and, and the local communities with these alcohol permits.
So was the, was the fee your request, recommendation, or was that negotiated this fee?
That was her request, we thought it, thought it very reasonable for what we're getting for our money.
Okay, so how are you making a comparison to other management production companies?
Well, I've talked to other people and I know what productions cost, we know from the civic center what productions cost to come in to put on events. And for the fee that we're getting and for what we get and what she provides for that fee, we think we get a, we get a good bang for our dollar. If you had, if you had to look at outsourcing that or, or doing it internally with our own manpower, we wouldn't, we didn't have the wherewithal, we don't have the manpower, we don't have the knowledge of dealing with the organizations and the agencies that are involved in the special permitting where Gumbo Production did.
Okay, but, but you, you would consider that competition is good?
Competition's good on anything, from engineering to architectural fees as well.
Exactly, and I think that would be advantageous in this situation, you know, starting from ground up, and I know you've been involved, but now at this point, you're going in a whole different direction, you manage it, managing the, uh, the area, and you may have others who have the same expertise that you have that could offer the same services maybe at a lower fee. I'm not saying they will, but they might, or they may have a different vision for how to get that area moving. So I think I would be in favor of considering more than one, uh, vendor or management company to, to do that. Seems like we should have options in that sense.
When you're talking about fees, is there going to be a price list, uh, for somebody that's interested in putting on a venue to know this is what tables are gonna cost them, uh, what, how many chairs they're gonna need and what that's gonna cost them?
Yeah, yes, sir, well, the tables and chairs, those types of things are included in that fee. The only thing...
They're included in what fee?
In the, in that fee.
In the fee, the fee we're providing.
Right.
Okay, but they're gonna be paying something, right, whoever's gonna be...
No, sir, that's in, that's in, that's in the, what we're gonna offer, it's just like what the festival Plaza in Shreveport offers, the tables and chairs that are there. And, and I know y'all don't keep them on site, but we have them, and so we...
Okay, if somebody's gonna put on a venue, and you mentioned Flying Heart, uh, I think they're talking about a home brewing venue where they're gonna have a bunch of home brewers, they're gonna, they're gonna charge a fee for people to come to that event, I would imagine. Are, is your production company going to charge them a fee for that?
There's package, there's certain packages that will be put together for things that are beyond a scope of services. For example, if a three-piece band comes in, they're gonna bring their own sound music, sound, you know, sound equipment. If a large band like this, uh, band of, you know, this, uh, band, uh, Band Wars comes in, they're asking for a full-size production stage with LED screens and all these things, and of course, that's not in that fee. But we do give them packages and we say, okay, here's, here's, we want to make it affordable for anybody, whether they have a five-piece band, for us Thursday afternoon, or if they have a band wars over three days, we want to make it affordable.
Okay, uh, and, and, Ms. Florosa, I do have some concern about the way the ordinance was written and the scope of the area that it encompasses. And the, the reason for that is, uh, let me find it on here. Whereas the city of Bossier City has recently officially opened the East Bank District, and we know what the district encompasses, uh, from Margaritaville down to...
No, sir, no, sir, the East Bank District is from Traffic Street to Hamilton Road.
Okay, alright, it's, it's much larger than the...
Than the defined area for alcohol.
Exactly, okay, and this is, and, and that's a first I've heard as far as it covering from Traffic Street because I thought that the two casinos, the Boardwalk, were in the East Bank, but...
No, sir.
They're not.
No, sir.
Okay, the signage...
The East Bank District is the area of the downtown area, the B four zone district, from Traffic Street to Hamilton Road, the area that the actual downtown re-envisioning project took place in.
Thank you for that clarification, the reason I, I bring that up is because I did think it was encompass the whole area that the original...
No, sir, technically, the other area with the casinos is its own, uh, riverfront development district, from Margarita down to Diamond Jacks.
Okay, okay, and it said, uh, working with local businesses in the East Bank District to develop programming ideas for the district and the plaza.
Correct.
So, to me, that this ordinance was, was taking on much more than just management of venues at the plaza.
No, sir, it's taking in the East Bank District as, as we've just defined that area, working with the business owners as she discussed. She's gone from the five hundred block down to the eight hundred block where this business is located, trying to unite those business owners.
Okay, thank you.
Let me ask one other thing and, and I'll be done, are you currently under contract with the city?
No, I've just been doing it on a, um...
A fee, a fee, we've, we've paid a small fee.
But it's not been...
Five hundred dollars for do, to do what she's been doing.
Uh, yeah, I pretty much just kind of keep up with my hours of when I meet with these bank and merchants.
Thank you so much.
I have a question about the, uh, that, the Property Owners Association, so is, is that, uh... How is that formula, is that, um, does that exist as a, as an entity, a formal entity?
It's not been formalized, I think we just...
No, it's not been like incorporated or anything like that, we've just been meeting.
They've just had discussions, I think they've had two meetings.
We've had, yeah, we've had two meetings, we have another one that's coming Thursday.
Okay, good, thank you.
But we're trying to unite the group down there as a whole.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, they're, I mean, they're very excited to, yeah.
It needs an association that would be good to, for a lot of reasons.
Right, it's different than, than the Boardwalk, because the Boardwalk are tenants within the Boardwalk itself, and they're united by the management of Boardwalk. Here, there's, it's scattered because you don't have any one uniting force, and that's where she's acting as that and helping us bring them together to the table.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews, thank you, Ms. Florosa. Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Thank you, Ms. Floro. So any other discussion, council members?
How, how is this terminated? How does, how does this end?
I think it's one year, and then.
It'll be a one-year contract.
It, it's, okay, yeah, good, got it.
The contract, I think we need to have attached to this, something we can look at, this and that, you know? I mean, there's something that needs to be attached to this ordinance, so we can approve the, the contract too.
Okay. Any other comments by council members? Yes, sir.
Where's the funding coming from?
Thank you. And if there's someone who would like to speak regarding item three on the agenda, you may speak. Okay, council, we have a motion, Mr. Montgomery, and a second. Mr. Larkin, please cast your vote.
I'm sorry, I hit the wrong button. I thought I hit the no button.
You did hit the no button, and then it, then it changed to yes.
Too late.
Like you changed your vote to yes. It's like you changed your vote to yes.
I hit the no button.
Do you want to revote, council?
Yes, let's revote.
Can we revote? He said.
I hit the red button. I didn't see it change.
It, it, it showed up red on mine, and then it immediately went to green.
Council, please cast your vote again.
That's crazy.
Cast your vote again.
It stayed red that time. Motion fails. It showed up, it showed up as red, and it changed, it changed to green, so I didn't know if you changed your vote or not.
Introducing ordinance enacting section six dash forty-seven of the Bossier City Code of Ordinances entitled Special Events Alcohol Permit Festival Plaza Region First Reading.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Any discussion? Anyone would like to speak on item four? Council, please cast your vote.
That motion carries.
Introducing ordinance to appropriate four thousand six hundred fifty-two dollars and forty cents to come from the sales tax capital improvement fund to be used for rewiring and reorganizing the computer equipment at the Bossier Homeland Security Office. First reading.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Comments? Please cast your vote, council.
Introducing ordinance amendment section eighteen dash forty, section D five regarding the prohibition of electrical fences. First reading.
So move.
Second. Discussion?
Yeah, I had, I had one, let me find it. I had a question. I'm sorry, maybe it wasn't on this one then. Go ahead.
Uh, it's Mr. Darby.
Okay.
I have a motion by Mr. Montgomery, and a second by Mr. Larkin.
Yes, Larkin, yes. The floor is open for a comment. If you please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. Carol Bossinger with Electric Guard Dog Columbia, South Carolina. I'm here just to say thank you for considering this ordinance at this time to allow electrified fencing in the industrial zones.
Thank you for being here. Council, please cast your vote.
Introducing ordinance amendment section one one eight dash four, T N C permit required fees relative to the regulation of transportation network companies. First reading.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote.
Introducing ordinance appropriating fifty-six thousand dollars plus benefits for a total of seventy-eight thousand eight hundred sixty-four dollars and eighty-four cents from the general fund fund balance to hire an assistant director of permits. First reading.
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
I just wanna make a comment that I appreciate you all in, in this ordinance, not only looking at the base salary, but the total compensation package and the actual cost to the city. I think that's a wonderful step forward in our budget control process. So I wanna thank everyone that had anything to do with that presentation. Mayor?
Any comment from the floor? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution to hire and promote one recreation maintenance worker two to replace vacant positions in Parks and Recreation and backfill any vacancies created by transfer or promotion. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Anyone would like to comment? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of three replacement police officers, one replacement police communications officer one, and one replacement police records clerk one due to resignations from the department. First and final reading.
Second.
Discussion? Anyone would like to speak on this item? Please cast your vote, council.
Adopt a resolution to fill two vacancies in the Public Works Department. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Comments? Please cast your vote.
Mr. Montgomery? Thank you. Adopt a resolution to commit two hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually for twelve years for a total of three million dollars towards completion of the I twenty and I, at I two twenty interchange into Barstel Air Force Base. First and final reading.
So move.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to tell us again about this one?
Sure. This is considered a mega project, and there's a lot of mega projects in the state, really good projects, but they don't happen unless you have a twenty percent match, and very few communities have the twenty percent match. Dr. Wilson sent an emissary up here to talk to us, saying that our project to get the exchange is still on the board. If we could come up with the eighteen million dollars, which would be the twenty percent match, overall, it'd be ninety percent. So the parish was there, I was there, N L cog was there, and we told them informally that the N L cog, we could contribute one million dollars per year. And then if the city and parish respectively would agree to two fifty, quarter million dollars a year for twelve years. Jointly, we would come up with six million dollars at the end of twelve years. And so this was using Garvey bonds, which is a new funding mechanism, been around for a while. But twenty-six states have used them, they're good, solid, and investment-type of procedure. And we would not be able to get this crucially needed gate into Barstel due to their world situation, such as it is now, and the responsibility that the base has for nuclear weapons and deterrence and that sort of thing. So that's basically it, and be glad to go in further detail if anybody wants. They call Garvey bonds, is what they call them.
We're making a commitment, and also the police jury?
Yes, they've already passed their resolution today. Hopefully, we've passed ours. The N L cog has already had ours at the N L cog entered into the record. They just have to have two public hearings before they could adopt it, but it will pass.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Any, yes, sir?
Stacy, we're, is the funding?
Riverboat Capital Projects Fund, two fifty a year.
I might add, it's also been approved for design and build, which suggests it may be completed earlier than twelve years, but still the funding will remain the same if come up with eighteen million dollars to make it work.
There would be no possibility that they could come back and ask for more, right?
Absolutely not.
Okay, yeah.
The state only got six hundred million dollars overall for the whole state, and they got two other mega projects they wanna fund. One is down in Baton Rouge where the I ten splits down there because of huge traffic problem. Then they got a new airport down there, but they need to roll into it. So those are the only two other mega projects along with ours, and there is no more money to do any more projects.
And it's a mega project?
Mega project.
Yeah, first time in Northwest Louisiana, would you say?
At that scope, yeah, we, we've been calling that through the N L cog, which is our transportation management organization. We've been calling that our number one priority for years. The governor's come on strong for it. The base is really, really appreciative of it because of the intended upgrade of the weapon storage area, which will also bring a new gun range under the ground, and new dormitory for the security police personnel, and probably around five hundred and sixty million for those, for just for the weapon storage area, and the new dormitory, and for the gun range. There'll be probably, I've heard as high as four hundred new people coming into the area as a consequence of this. But it is a tremendous aid to the mission out of Barstel for this interchange to be completed as soon as feasible.
Thank you. Congratulations, good work too, Mayor, working.
We're going back down this Thursday. We went down to, before the Joint Transportation Committee two weeks ago, and there were questions there. But in the end, they passed a unanimous way. Now they got the Joint Senate and Representative Budget Committee this Thursday. And we're going down again, we being the parish ourselves, and Chamber of Commerce and other representatives, just to physically demonstrate our strong support of it. Chamber of Commerce has prepared a thick book of support that we'll leave with them, so then there'll be one more meeting after that. So it's not a, it's not a total done deal yet, but it looks extremely good.
Yes, sir. You don't talk of it. Any comments? We have a motion and a second already. Council, please cast your vote.
Thank you.
Approve parade permit fee waiver for the following crosswalk, twenty eighteen, Bella Baptist, March thirtieth, twenty eighteen.
Second.
Discussion? Comments? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a tax auditor due to a resignation. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Anyone might speak on this? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing one communications officer to be replaced due to a vacancy from resignation. First and final reading.
So move.
Okay.
Discussion? Comments? Please cast your vote, council. That's the last item. Any announcements, anyone? I would just like to thank Utility Department and Ben, your crew getting on that Bascom Evans project. It's, it's been like that for a long time, and so when I was able to bring it to your attention, the crew were, were able to, to get it done. Appreciate that. Nothing more? Meeting stands adjourned.